Okay, we are ready to begin. We call to order the Lander County Commissioners Meeting, Towne Board of Battle Mountain and Austin, Board of County Highway Commissioners for September 19th, 2019. And welcome everyone, and please remember to mute your cell phones for us. There is general information on the agenda of how our schedule works and where your public comment can be made on the different items if you so choose. And before we begin the Pledge of Allegiance this morning, it's probably in the history as we give our salute to the flag. It may be one of the last times that we'll be saluting the 50 because Congress is voting on our 51st state today. So we'll see if Washington DC will become unstable, change to 51 stars. So if you all rise and give our salute to this 50 stars and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now if you'll join us in a moment of silence, please. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12 o'clock to 1:15. Any item, any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. We'll begin with our Commissioners' reports, and we'll start with you, Art. Do you have anything to report on for us?
We met with Senator Masto Cortez. Informally, we talked about a few things. One thing that stood out was, for me, was that the Senator did not understand or even know about the Promise Plan, which led to the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas school shooting on February 14th last year. So I gave her a copy. Since that time, a couple of weeks ago, Andrew Pollack wrote a book about his daughter, Why Meadow Died. And it lists all the things in the book of what led up to, what the school did and what the Sheriff's Office did that led up to the shooting and the killing of 17 different people. And I would suggest you get a copy of this book and read it because it's pretty darn scary.
Thank you.
Just a hospital board meeting, I'm not much to report on that. Everything else is outbreak for the summer, we'll be restarting this next month.
Can you, Brian? Thank you. I did have a few, I'll just share quickly. Yes, the meeting with Senator Cortez Masto is always appreciated. She seems to do that Highway 80 for us and take us in and remember this, and we sincerely appreciate that. We also discussed the public lands, and Harrell was coming with that. She had been contacted already by our folks that are handling that. On August 28th, I did have an NNRDA meeting, and this is our regional development. They have signed a two-year contract with GOED, the Governor's Office on Economic Development, and we're working on the new contract that will be including Humboldt to join us. On August 29th, we had the Kingston Town Board meeting, and actually, the CEO from the hospital, Jason Bleak, attended and gave them a heads up on where they are as far as the clinic, and they're still discussing that with the hospital on the Kingston Clinic and what's going to happen. But he's really pretty sure everybody's going to go with the closure if they don't find somebody else to take that over. And they've been at least contacting the Nevada rural health centers to see if they might be interested. On August 30th, I did have an NAOC meeting. Of course, we're getting ready for conference, but there's a couple of things. We had a speaker from the Forest Service, and she really gave us quite a bit of information on their new ideas of how they're going to work with our ranchers, our grazing. They're looking at all year-round grazing, actually. There's several things that they are considering that seem a lot more user-friendly to the ranchers and to our citizens. So it was, that was good. And of course, the conference is coming up next Wednesday and Thursday in Sparks, and so there's a lot on that. We do have one of our national deputy legislatures that will be out, that handles legislation that will be out to speak with us. And also along that, and I think most of you probably got the information as far as our Commissioners, but on September 12th, the Trump Administration released a final rule to repeal the Waters of the US. And that was the one that was in 2015 under Obama, and that has been officially repealed. We've been hearing about that for a long time. So the definition and reinstatement goes back to 1986, how it was before. I think they'll be addressing that again, but at least we don't have that terribly strong definition that we had that was so difficult for all of the counties. On September 4th, I did attend the LIDA meeting. Actually, they're going forward with a lot of different things, Main Street program and such, and had excellent response from the outside of our new bike trail. They had been selling benches and trees, and we had an excellent response. The citizens have turned out to handle that, and it should be really beautiful. On September 9th, we had an Austin Airport Advisory Board meeting. Actually, there were six different folks that we had out of the Naval Air Station in Fallon, and that's also on the agenda today, so I won't be going into that. And on September 16th, the Cooperative Extension Search Committee met and did final interviews for our new educator for Lander County. And we had two of them that came in that were our top two choices, and they will be making a decision on that, not just the search committee, but of course, I interviewed with all the folks in Reno and such, too. So hopefully, that decision will be down soon, and we will have an educator before the end of the year. We're looking forward to that. Moving on, we'll go into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Kate?
The only thing I have today is with a lot of work from Ms. Madonna Long, we've completed our Americas with, Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan. There's a copy here, it's been submitted to the NDOT, and so we're moving forward, and we will have an ADA plan in place in Lander County shortly. Thanks.
Sure?
Sure, please, yep.
Okay. Next is our public comment. This is for non-agenda items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend to make comments on any non-agenda item at the board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Bethany, public comment this morning?
Look at me.
Judge, good morning.
Good morning. Denise Fortune, for the record, Argenta Justice Court, Justice of the Peace. I'm here this morning just to give you guys kind of a heads up. I was hoping to get on the next agenda, but I'm not going to have my ducks in a row by then because it's a lot of information to get. So kind of in a nutshell, it's kind of all tied in together, but what I'm going to be asking for is a possible bailiff, court martial, somebody for the Argenta Justice Court. Out of 20 courts in the state of Nevada, and I've known this, I've been an employee there for 25 years, we are, there are three courts, three rural courts out of 20 that do not have security. We are one of them. It's kind of funny, we just found this out, of the three that do not have security, Judge Shirley and I just realized this the other day, it is Mineral County, which is Hawthorne, which falls under Judge Shirley, which he doesn't, I'm not saying it's his fault, it's not, it just, these three ended up being, Judge Shirley is our district judge, Hawthorne, Lovelock, and Lander, as three do not have any type of security in the courtroom. It's been an issue for myself as an employee for a lot of years. I used to give Max a hard time about it, going, hey, we want some security. And he, he's an ex-cop. He's a guy, he's, you know, he never felt that he needed security. Last week, for the first time, I had a defendant in court, this has never happened before, after, nice guy, don't know the guy, but after his case said, "Your Honor, can I ask you a question?" And I said, "Sure." And he said, "Why don't you have a bailiff in here?" Nobody's ever asked us that question, and it kind of made the hair on the back of my neck stand up a little bit, and my clerk kind of looked at me and went like, you know, why did, why are they asking us why we don't have a bailiff in here? Makes you a little bit nervous. The law says district courts have to have bailiffs in court, so the Sheriff's Office provides bailiffs to the district court. The Sheriff's Office provides bailiffs to us when they're doing transport from the Lander County Sheriff's Office and the people are in custody. But besides those times, I do not have any security in the courtroom. There's no security getting into this courthouse to get to the courtroom. For the safety of myself, the public, the defendants, my staff, we want some security. My plan, which I had talked to Cindy about this the other day, since I got into office, my plan had always been to come to you guys next fiscal year, you know, have it in my budget, have all my ducks in a row, and come see you guys. Well, we had a law passed last Thursday, one week from today, justice courts in all state, in the state of Nevada, all justice courts now have to do jury trials. Justice courts don't do jury trials. If you guys have been watching the news, every justice court in the state of Nevada right now are losing their minds. I'm not the only one in front of their Commissioners saying, hey, I've got jury trials. I did talk to Judge Shirley a couple of days ago. He showed me a letter, I don't know if he has submitted it to you or not, explaining to you, thank goodness, Judge Shirley has the funds right now to cover us. He has a jury commissioner, he'll do the, send out the summons, do all of that. We have a court reporter. Monetary-wise, it's not going to affect Justice Court right now because Judge Shirley has it in his budget to cover his three counties, which thank goodness were underneath that one. So for now, if you haven't received the letter yet, you're receiving a letter from Judge Shirley that says, hey, Justice Court's got to do jury trials, there's going to be a lot of costs for that. Okay, you have gotten it, okay. For now, we're good, but we may have to come. One of the things that we're not good at is if I have a jury trial, I have to have bailiffs, I have to have a bailiff in there. It is the law, I have to have a bailiff in there. I have had a meeting with Ron and Robert. Sheriff's Office is very good to us, they've always been very good to us. They'll help us out when they can, but it's not guaranteed, you know, if I need a bailiff that if they're short-staffed, or they've got an important call going on, or district courts going on, I may not be able to have a bailiff. I have to have a bailiff. So we're researching it right now. I, for the last few months, had thought it would be pretty simple. I could create a position in Justice Court, ask you guys for the money, pay them as a position under the Justice Court, and I would have a bailiff. There's also another law that is in effect, it's AD 12539. All courts now have to do a risk assessment tool. It is Lander County's policy, at least our policy, Justice Court's policy. We do not usually OR on felonies. Will the law change? And if they fall under certain criteria, I have to OR. So I have to help figure out if I can OR them, if I should OR them, and who's going to keep track of these alleged felons while they're out on OR? Well, I need somebody that carries a gun and can drug test people to do that. So if I have a bailiff, we're hoping to implement that in with it also. So it will not just be a bailiff. The law says I have to do risk assessment now on everybody that goes to jail. If they count bail out, I have to look at certain criteria to see if I have to OR them. So I'm also stating, in case I forget to in the future, when the public's wondering why there's felons being let out of jail, just so that they know, I don't have control anymore. The law says if they fall under these guidelines, I have to let them out. So I have also talked to Liz Brella at the HR Department, because again, I had thought it would be a simple thing, creating a position, putting it out. We're rural, we're small, I may not get anybody that wants to do it, I don't know. I may not have somebody that is going to be qualified to do it, but I need to at least try. Ms. Brella brought up the issue, which I didn't even think of, of the liability, insurance liability, and I think Robert and Ron touched on it when I was over there meeting with them the other day. As a Lander County employee, I fall under certain umbrella for liability. Law enforcement falls under another one. So this is kind of one of the things we need to figure out. Do we get an employee that is a court employee, but we have to worry about the liability insurance? Do we get an employee but is considered Lander County employee? In which one do you put them under? Or do we hopefully, if we need to, give the money to the Lander County Sheriff's Office and say, here's an employee that is with an agreement that they're my employee first?
Judge, may I ask you a question? Because I know we're way over the three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that's okay, it's at our discretion, and we appreciate what you're saying. But it sounds like you're more arguing the case, and I'm going, we can put this on the agenda, and all those things are very important.
Yes, 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 just to give you guys heads up.
Appreciate it.
It's coming, we're going to get our ducks in a row, we'll bring some options to you guys. I just, in the middle of a, you know, we're halfway between the budget year, when I come to you guys and say, hey, I need money to do this, I just want to give you a heads up.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Good morning.
And as you may know, I sent this to you a letter stating that our drug dog, Dallas, we had to put him down, and I just wanted to make sure you folks all knew that. The reason we had to put him down, as you know, when we retired him, he had arthritis breaking down in the hips real bad, and then later on, he got like dementia. He'd wake up and he'd run into walls, and so we took him to the vet, had him checked, and the vet recommended we put him down, so we did. So I wanted to let you folks know, he's been, he was a great dog. As you know, he got one of the largest drug busts in the state of Nevada, the northern part, was astronomical, he did a great job, so we'll probably get a plaque for him and put it somewhere in the Sheriff's Office, but anyway, I wanted to inform you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our consent agenda. All matters. Under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during the meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. Number one, approval of September 19th, 2019 Agenda Notice. Number two, approval of April 11th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number three, approval of April 25th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number four, approval of May 9th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number five, approval of May 23rd, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number six, approval of June 27th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number seven, approval of July 11th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number eight, approval of July 25th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number nine, approval of August 8th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number 10, approval of August 22nd, 2019 Meeting Minutes. And number 11 is the approval of the payment of bills. We do have today the Agenda Notice. Number two, April 11th Minutes. Number three, April 25th Meeting Minutes. And I would like to pull the rest of them, including number 11, the approval of the payment of bills. So if I could have a motion for the top three, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Brian made the motion, and Kathy seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And now, under the approval of the payment of bills.
I'll make a motion.
We have four checks we do need to take out. Number 204-501, 204-578, 204-668, and 204-739, and those are for Brian's employer.
Yeah, I'll abstain from those checks because they're made to my employer.
Thank you. A motion to approve the rest of the bills without those?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Kathy, the motion, Brian seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we need a motion to pay for those four bills.
I'll make the motion to pay for those.
Thank you. Kathy made the motion, I'll second it on that one. And all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And I abstain.
Thank you. Moving down to our Commissioners, the first item on the agenda. For possible action, consider the character, alleged misconduct, professional competence, or physical or mental health of Lander County Commissioner Judy Allen, including but not limited to her failure to offer courtesy and respect during open meetings and her failure to observe ethics guidelines. Action may include censure, admonishment, or other such action deemed appropriate by the Board. This is some, this is a sad one to put on, and we as a commission were getting a little bit uncomfortable with some of the things that were going on, and we thought this would be good, actually, for all of us to consider, but we need to look at the professionalism and the respect and the courtesy that we have as Commissioners. There's a reason that they call us honorable, and if we slip from that, we certainly need to be on our toes, and we apologize. It's unfortunate that this did have to be addressed, but it was felt that if we did, that perhaps we might be able to do a little bit more on a better decorum with our agendas and our commission meetings from now on.
So I'd like to say something. I'm removing myself from this item because I feel it's wrong. I don't think it's the form to ridicule an elected official. That's my belief, that's my integrity, it changed, and it's no different than when we had the legal outside of our meeting, where we had a consensus that it wasn't the right road to go down, and I'm still holding to that opinion, so I'll have nothing more to say about the issue.
Okay.
Kathy? Which I respect. My issue that is civil, the civility of the meeting, and trying to keep it to where not, where not belittling one another or the public, that is my hot topic on this, and my only personal issue is that. And we are, won't, can't vote or do anything on this issue other than just, at this point, state our opinion, like Brian did, he was removing himself, which I totally respect, but my issue again is civility, and that we hold ourselves to the same level as we hold our employees, and that we don't allow our employees to treat each other and speak to each other like that. And I think that we are the same way, we should not treat each other or speak to our employees or the public without civility, and that is my issue in a nutshell, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'm recusing myself from this situation. I was one of the people that filed a complaint against Commissioner Allen. I took my concern to Keith in June, and he took it to the Chair and the Vice Chair, and they decided to put this on the agenda, so I'm accusing myself of this.
Thank you. With that, we apologize for any embarrassment this might have brought on, but we did feel it was important, it should be addressed, and we were given that legal information and the information from our POOPAC liability carrier of the way it needed to be on. So with that, we take no action, and we move directly out of order to number 16. We have an employee that needs to be on the road, so we need to look at the fiscal officer for possible action to approve or disapprove Resolution 2019-10 to augment the fiscal year 1920 budget funds for 226, 236, and 015.
17, or is it 16?
16. Good morning, Cindy.
Cindy Benson, for the record.
Thank you. This is to change, as we said, the budget funds in these three areas, but we do have to have the motion with the full resolution read into the record.
So I'll approve, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-10 of the Board of A resolution to augment the FY 2019-2020 budget of the Water Fund 226, the Sewer Fund 236, and the Lander County Economic Development Authority Fund 015. Whereas, certain funds of the approved budget require changes based on requests from department heads or elected officials, which changes are specifically described and detailed below. And whereas, certain areas of the approved budget require changes to reflect budgeting according to generally accepted accounting principles, which changes are specifically described and detailed below. And whereas, in the Water Fund 226, Lander County Road of Commissioner's desire to fund an additional 400,000, is it 4 million? 4 million, $481,432, which brings the total appropriations to 5,521,322. The available resource for this augmentation came from a higher-than-anticipated fund balance. Whereas, in the Sewer Fund 236, Lander County Board of Commission desires to fund an additional 5,761,884, which brings the total appropriations to 6,790,339. The available resources for this augmentation came from a higher-than-anticipated fund balance. And whereas, in the Lander County Economic Authority Fund 015, Lander County Board of County Commissioners desires to fund an additional 21,500, which brings the total appropriations to 29,000. The available resource for this augmentation came from a higher-than-anticipated fund balance, passed on this 19th day of September 2019.
And authorized?
And authorized the Chair to sign.
I'll second.
Thank you. Kathy made the motion, and Brian seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and that passes. Thank you, Cindy. We are back to number two. Lander Commissioners, for possible action to nominate a Lander County Commissioner to be a representative on the State Land Use Planning Advisory Council, which is SLU PAC. Actually, we do nominate- Actually, we do, um, we do nominate somebody as a representative, and that goes before the governor, and the governor makes the appointment. Commissioner Clark has been our representative on SLU PAC, and apparently that time is up. Is that correct?
No, what it is, is that he's.
It is. It, 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 my term was over in eighteen.
Right, and then in January, in January, when you guys, when the commission assigned different, uh, groups to the commissioners, you voted on it, but the, to leave him as SLU PAC representative. But SLU PAC needs an official, separate vote from the commission to reappoint him.
Yeah, SLU PAC needs that.
Yeah.
Not lumped in with what we did with, when we did all the appointments?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. And Commissioner Clark, so you want to serve, you need to serve on that board?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion to nominate Commissioner Clark to the, um,
State Land.
State Land Use Planning Advisory Council.
I'll second.
Thank you. Kathy made the motion. Brian seconded it. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Commissioner?
Aye.
We bounced to number nine, and have the high school come up with their item they have on the conference table. Time, time sensitive.
You would think they'd want to be last.
I'm Alexi, and I am seated by the desk.
Just a minute. Thank you. We're glad you're here, and I'll read it into the record, and then you can explain this to us. Battle Mountain High School, number nine. For possible action to approve this, approve the homecoming parade permit and the route.
I'm Alexi, and I'm the president at the Battle Mountain High School.
My name is Julian Rubion. I'm the student body vice president.
And I'm founder Targason, the principal and student council advisor.
Welcome. Welcome to our commission. Okay, so commissioners, you have the permit and the parade route in front of you. Do you have any questions?
So I'll make a motion to approve the homecoming parade permit route.
I'll second.
And authorize the chair to sign.
I'll second.
Thank you. Kathy made the motion. Brian seconded. Any other discussion?
May I make a comment?
Yes, absolutely.
I just want to ask if, if this is the procedure. It seems like kind of a waste of your time for something that happens yearly. It's not a waste of your time? Okay, because we're wondering if we could maybe make it approved for every Friday of homecoming week or something like that.
You, you could put that on the agenda to do. We can do it today because it's not part of what we're doing for today. But whether the commissioners would feel that they'd want to do that far ahead, you might decide to chase the route or something.
Yeah.
And today, we wouldn't know. Coming before us, we know the timeframe and everything, too.
Well, we like to see you guys from the high school.
I think it's a great experience for the kids.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Not a waste of time, that's true. It's government.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for coming. Thank you for a wonderful, wonderful homecoming.
Win.
Okay, we're going back to number three. Under county manager, for possible action to appoint one individual to serve on the Austin Airport Advisory Board. The term expires on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And that individual is Kim Shot, our new applicant. And she has stepped forward to assist us by filling our board finally, so this is exciting. Kim, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Gee, I just knew she would be. We're so delighted you stepped forward. And if you have any questions?
No, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve Team Shot for the position.
I'll second. Thank you. Brian made the motion. Kathy seconded that. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
This is Ray Williams, I'm the current chairman of the board, and I certainly support your appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you for all being there. All in favor? Aye. Aye. And that passes. Thank you, Kim. And thank you, Ray. Number four, county manager, for possible action to reappoint two individuals to serve on the Lander County Advisory Board to manage wildlife. The term expires on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. And under this one, fortunately, we have our two individuals that have served before and are putting their, their application in to continue to serve with us. So that would be Worth Nelson, number A, and number B, Ted McLaven? No, Michael Vane.
Michael Vane.
Michael Vane. There we go. Thank you. And so we're delighted they're going to do that. And any other questions from the board?
I'll make a motion that we accept Worth Nelson and Ted McElveen to the Lander County Advisory Board to manage wildlife.
I'll second. Thank you. Brian made the motion. Kathy seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
No.
Aye. Thank you, and that passes. Number five, county manager, for possible action to appoint one individual to serve on the Battle Mountain Livestock Advisory Board. The term expires on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And this would be William Neal, who is a new applicant.
I'll make a motion to appoint William Neal.
I'll second.
Thank you. Kathy made the motion that we approved Mr. Neal as our new applicant. And Brian seconded that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And that, um, we welcome Mr. Neal, and thank you very much for, uh, for coming in to handle that on the livestock advisory board. Hope that goes well. Number six, county manager. For possible action to approve, modify, or disapprove a franchise agreement between the Lander County and Nevada Energy. This is not going to go as quickly as the others just did.
Okay, we'll be here for as long as it takes.
Welcome. Good morning.
Welcome. Good morning, Commissioner Blais.
Linda Biswick, NBI Energy and Government Affairs Representative.
And Bob Rice, I'm the area serviceman. We're, uh, love luck with, with in Battle Mountain.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Okay, we see our, our time is up, actually. We had fifty years.
Yes, it was a long one.
Under this franchise.
It's a long one.
And our legal counsel tells us now that, um, according to, what, the Nevada statutes, it's limited to twenty-five years.
Yes, some of the laws have changed, and so we are asking for a twenty-year agreement with the option to extend an additional five years to get that maximum twenty-five to serve, provide electric service to the customers in Lander County and to use the county rights of way to do so.
Thank you. We do see, we have some options on that. Did all of you have a chance to study this and look into it? The, um, the way I understand it is that the two percent that you actually collect that goes to the schools, that stays the same on all three options.
Yes.
Right? So it's just our percentage that we're looking at, it doesn't tell me.
Yes.
And the main one is two percent, and then there's the different options in there that allow you to raise that to a maximum of five, if you would like to, over a period of time. It actually can increase one percent every two years, if you'd like to do something like that. My understanding is, though, if I have this right, that if we vote for higher taxes, if we decide to go up to the five percent, one percent, then you just tack that on and your, your price goes higher to all of our, our citizens, right?
Correct. It's a pass.
So we might want to think about not increasing that.
And it is, it is noted on the bill, when there's something new on a customer's bill, we do provide a one-time notice with that first bill, that they will see a change, and this is pursuant to, uh, county, um, action or a county decision to implement this fee. It's allowed by state law. So it does end up bringing a little attention to it, and sometimes customers have questions.
Did you folks have any other questions on it? Did I explain it in the record?
Half a percent a year, up to five percent. So it'd be ten years, it would be five percent.
No, it goes up a percent every two years. Starts with two, and then for the next two years, one, and then two years, one, two years, one, goes up to five, max, if, if we wanted to choose that.
Up to five percent every two years?
No, no, no. After a period of, it'd be six, six years, it hits five percent.
Right, half a percent per year.
That's the max. Okay, but it actually goes up one percent every two. Or we could decide not to change anything at all.
Yeah, it's worked for fifty years. I'm not in favor of increasing fees.
Or you can take the option to decrease it by two percent. That's one of the three options.
Decrease it?
Decrease, take, pull the, and that would be option, uh, number one. It would, uh, it still would contain the two percent net profits for the school, and it would not contain a gross franchise fee language. So you would take the two percent away, so basically you would be giving back money to the constituents and their, their people they provide service to. So you have, you can reduce it by two percent, you could keep it current, which is two percent for the schools and two percent franchise fee, or you can go up to five percent and have the two percent on the school. But either, all three options includes the two percent net profits for the school.
So all of them are two percent of the school, but then we can reduce two percent to our constituents?
Absolutely. You can do that.
That's the option I'm in favor of. And that was option one, correct, Ted?
That was option one. Right, Linda?
Yes. Yes.
Make you sure.
Yeah.
Option one is effective October first, right? Well, they're all effective October first, but, but, October first is right. Okay.
It would go back.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. Are we ready for a motion?
Um, we are, as long as I just clarify one thing here. When I'm looking at it, on the very first where it is, though, which is on the very first page, it does say, um, no, I think we're all okay. Yeah, it's been fifty years, so this is our new one since nineteen sixty-nine.
Right.
Okay, so, and the new one is twenty plus the five extended on a monthly, unless you tell us, no.
Right.
And I will add, if you do decide to remove it and go back to zero, there's always the option down the road, if there's a different sentiment in the future, you can reinstate that via ordinance.
By ordinance. We'd have, we would have to make an ordinance that would, that would allow it. But we don't have to make an ordinance on any one of these options today, if you do it today. But any, any further proceedings?
It's contractual, but to change the contract, we have to do an ordinance.
Oh, yes.
Got it.
I'd make a motion that we approve franchise agreement number one between Lander County and Nevada.
Brian made the motion. I'll second it. Is there any other discussion? Okay, so this actually will reduce all of the Nevada Energy bills to our citizens, right?
Yes. That's a nice, that's a nice present for them.
No public comment on that?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. I want to thank Mr. Westinghouse and Mr. Barrera for their efforts in getting this together for you, with all the different options to consider, so.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and take a quick, just a quick five-minute break. Thank you. Thank you. The commission will come back to order. And we are on number seven. County manager, for possible action renewal of lease for women, infant, and children, which is WIC, located at three seven zero South Mountain Street, Battle Mountain, Nevada, eight nine eight two oh. I'm going to ask Austin, you on?
We're here.
Thank you.
There's no, uh, change to this lease, other than the dates. It's been renewed by the DA. It's just a date change is all, is all it is to do it for another two years. But other than that, there are no changes.
Uh, it's a two, two years?
Yes.
You said. Okay. And also, um, the Frontier Community Action Agency uses the same building, does it?
Yes, and I believe Brenda's here.
But our, um, our lease is, uh...
The state wanted two separate contracts, because we did one, uh, last meeting, and then we needed to do two separate contracts.
Okay, so this one is just for WIC?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. Um, they're currently paying two hundred and fifty dollars a month?
That's what it is, yes.
Yeah, each.
Yeah.
Brenda Thomas. The, both programs are paying two hundred and fifty dollars each. So for the state to, um, to justify the expense, they have to have a sole lease, because it's two totally different grants, two totally different programs. One's federal, one's state, so.
So how much are we charging the Frontier Community Action?
Two fifty, two, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Two fifty?
Yes, two hundred and fifty.
So it's five hundred total for the building?
Got it. And that's comfortable enough, then?
No, but it's okay. We didn't do. All right, I'll make a motion to renew the lease for the WIC program located at three seventy South Mountain Street for two years.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kathy. The motion. Brian seconded that. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And that passes. Okay, and you're for the next one, too, right?
Yeah, I am.
We'll get done. Number eight. It says Brenda Thomas, for possible action to name the dog park located at Lyons Park after Michael Ferguson.
I am Brenda Thomas, for the record, and I'm just a community member on this one, and I'm just coming to represent other community members that thought it would be nice to honor Michael Ferguson in naming the dog park after him, simply because he was such a huge advocate for dogs and was kind of, from my understanding, he's one of the reasons that we have the dog park today. So I just thought it would be nice and appropriate to honor him in naming it after him.
Actually, he, he did come before us. He had been turning his dogs loose in the parking lot citations. And, and he did say, I'd love to have a place for my dog to run. That was true. I, I remember that. However, we, we had been discussing it for some time. Unfortunately, he didn't come to a lot of the other discussions that we had, but I'm so pleased he's there to use it. But I'll, I'll tell you, on my personal, um, opinion, it's like, when we start naming things after people, usually, like, the big ones, hospitals and, and schools and stuff, are very often named after someone that's gone before us. And, um, and when we start naming things after living people, that's usually because they give huge contributions.
He passed away in October seventeen.
Yeah, okay, but I'm saying it's usually, um, with a wing or something like that, you know, if, if they do that. And so I understand, since we have lost him, that you'd like to do something. And I think, um, rather than the park, because it is the Lyons Park.
Yes, that's the name of the park, the Lyons Park.
Right, and so therefore, it's the dog park at the Lyons Park. But I, I would very much like to see us, think about something like perhaps a park bench or something else that you can contribute to the dog park and put a plaque on that, rather than renaming it the park completely.
I wasn't asking for the renaming of the park, just of the little corner in the park, just, just.
Just where the actual fencing is for the dog park. He's not asking to rename the entire park. I wasn't about.
I understand that, but the name of the park is Lyons Park, Baldini, Lion Baldini.
It says to name the dog park located at Lyons Park. That's what it says. And so.
But she wasn't meaning to rename the whole park.
We don't want to name the dog park. Okay, you just want, you want a plaque somewhere.
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Just a recognition that he's, that he had a hand in getting it there, I guess.
I'm, I'm okay with recognition. I mean, if you put it on, on one of the park benches, or, I don't know, a tree can, can put a plaque on a tree without carving a tree or something, and, um...
When I, when Brenda and I discussed this, it was to take that corner of the park, the actual fenced area of just the dog park. Am I correct?
Yes.
And naming that, the Michael Ferguson Dog Park or something, but not to change the name of the actual park.
No, 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 no. I, I, I don't think we interpreted we were changing the Lyons Park.
Right, I just wanted to add.
But we're naming the dog park, and I'm saying, I, you know, when we start naming things after citizens, that's a precedent that's really difficult. But something in the park, if you wanted to do...
Or even, um, don't we have the ability to, um, make signs ourselves? Where we can just do, uh, thank you to him, we can put a...
Where we can just do, uh, thank you to him, we can put a sign on in, in memory of him, thank you to your contributions in helping us get this park? I mean, I mean, we do something like that, that just goes on the fence. It's not renaming that area. It's just thank you to Michael Ferguson for assisting us with this.
Just honoring him.
Oh, yeah, just so as, you, you know, and we have the ability to make those signs and just put it on the fence. We're not renaming anything. We're just thanking and, um, putting recognition to him.
And I, I guess I, I stand corrected on my agenda item. I just, I just wanted to honor him. I mean, I, I just thought it would, he was such a lover of animals and...
Dogs.
Dogs, dogs particularly. And, um, not necessarily humans, but I love dogs. And I just wanted to honor him, you know, while I'm representing the community, and they wanted to honor him. And I think it would be very appropriate.
So can I make a motion that we do a sign to honor, uh, Michael Ferguson and place it on the fence of, uh, the dog park?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm making that motion.
Okay, the motion is made, that we, we, um, we honor him in memory of him and his contribution, but we're not changing the name of the dog park, okay. Kathy made the motion, Brian's seconded. Any other discussion? Who wants to work with who on the wording? Brenda?
If you can give me some wording that you would like or the group would like.
Okay.
I'll get it on the sign or a plaque. We'll mount it there.
Okay, I'll talk to his daughter again just to make sure.
Okay, yes, you can email it or drop it by.
Okay.
We will, we'll get it set up and...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Number ten. Governor's Office of Science, Innovation, and Technology. For possible action to approve or disapprove the Lander County Manager to post a survey through Survey Monkey regarding business and residential broadband services in Lander County. Created by Governor's Office of Science, Innovation, and Technology.
She's from the Governor's Office.
We're gonna take just a moment as we make a call in to, um, someone from the Governor's Office.
Mr. Westerfield, Austin.
We're still here. This is JoJo.
JoJo, hi, this is Lander County Commission, and we've just read our item into the, into the record. And so we're just about ready to discuss, um...
Perfect.
The survey, thank you. For the record, can we have your last name? It's JoJo, right?
Correct, uh, my, uh, for the record, it is JoJo Myers-Tampos, and I am the State Broadband Development Manager for the Governor's Office of Science, Innovation, and Technology.
Thank you. Kyla, are you going to start us on this, or Keith?
Well, I, I, JoJo, if, JoJo, this is Keith. If you could, uh, explain what the survey's about.
I'm sorry, I did not hear that.
No, Keith wants you to, to start it out and tell us what the survey's about.
Oh, yes, absolutely. When we come into a community and we do what is called a whole-community connectivity approach, we always start with the survey. We have done this exact approach in Elko, including the Spring Creek City of Elko and Elko County. We have also done this process in Ealing, Nevada, as well as all of the surrounding areas there in White Pine County. We have also done this in Humboldt. Uh, we have also done this in, um, Skeet. And we've also done this in Pershing, Lovelock, and to include the surrounding areas, of course, the Dry Patch and Imlay as well. So when we want to really start looking at how can we get a city and/or county completely connected, and that means schools, libraries, public safety, transportation, which will also increase economic development opportunities, we always start with a survey. What the survey does is it starts giving me a baseline of the true issues, both commercial and residential. Most of the time, the commercial and residential will look very, very similar. Um, and what it states is, and it's only like ten questions in that, is basically, do you think you have what you need on an everyday basis to conduct business? To close the gap of public safety? To increase any of your healthcare clinics that could also do, uh, say telemedicine? Also, this helps us know about schools, libraries. And so therefore, when we send out the survey, it creates the baseline, so I can start doing a, a, a business case. Because my next step is then to start attracting providers that would be interested, and that's going to sometimes be both middle-mile and last-mile providers, that would be interest, interested in coming in and doing some kind of infrastructure broadband solution. So when I can show a provider ROI, because that's going to be the bottom line, if we, if, if we have a business, we do not have a business if we're going to go broke. We have a business that can, that, that can actually help us propel and actually have a healthy bottom line. So these surveys, we give directly to providers saying, see? This entire area is looking for better connectivity. Then we start the negotiations of what they can bring to the table. But without the survey, it is very difficult for me to start describing a business case.
Thank you. Uh, one of my questions then is, you keep saying area, and I'm, I'm assuming that's Battle Mountain area. However, on the agenda, we do have Lander County.
That's correct. It is going to be Battle Mountain and Austin.
Great.
We've already started doing some improvements in Austin, and so we want to make sure that we continue, uh, the progress that we're already working with.
Thank you. That's what we wanted to hear. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Do not.
Keith? No? Okay. Then I guess we're ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion, um, that we allow Survey Monkey to do a survey on behalf of the Governor's Office of Science, Innovation, and Technology to determine interest in broadband service.
Thank you. Brian raised a motion, and Kathy seconded that. Um, is there any other discussion?
This is Kim Shaw, related community in that in Austin, Nevada.
Yes, go ahead.
What are the improvements they've already started working on here in Austin? In Austin, we actually have a fiber build that will be going directly to the school. Um, your school is not, I mean, as you already know, it is not in good shape. So we went out for an E-rate build, uh, for the school district through the USAC FCC program called the E-rate Program. Every single, uh, district, uh, has already a discount rate with that. So we take actually the district rate, we take, I have what's called a state match through the Nevada Connect Kids Initiative. Anytime a state has state match, and I put in additional ten percent to help you build that, they then have to match me, so you get another ten percent from the FCC. Uh, what the school district did, and I was so, so thankful that the superintendent was so, uh, so pro-progress. Um, because they actually, uh, the entire fiber build is only going to cost thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, because the rest of it all got paid for by, through my office and through the FCC and the USAC office out of DC. And so that school, for the first time, starting in the spring, will have a fiber connectivity, allowing those students to then expand all of their digital and distance learning. They will be able to then do online curriculum. And so that is, that is going to be a game changer. Uh, one of the things we heard when we went there last year, there were some parents actually doing homeschooling, because they did not feel that the Austin school had what it took to actually keep up with today's, uh, demand. Well, now, they will have that demand, because they will have a fiber connection, and they will be able to build and expand, and it will be completely sustainable. The other thing that we have done, we are going out, we have the RFP ready to go. Um, uh, we will be going out for an RFP for the, uh, Austin library. And then we are going out for a fiber build for the library. So now, when you get fiber through the USAC program, both to the library and the school, what this does is it's going to set you up to have a provider come in, this will be a last-mile provider. Because being that this, uh, we, we put in, we always request a big bundle of fiber, not like, you know, four strands, six strands. We will request forty-eight to ninety-six strands of fiber. We will then cost allocate out the fiber to be used by the library, the fiber to be used by the school, allowing the rest of that fiber to be used by a last-mile provider to then actually benefit your residents and any other key stakeholders you have there in Austin.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Austin?
I don't, just, uh, is this kind of a guarantee that, um, the school will have that internet set in the spring? Because we're kind of relying on that for, our school for next year for the high school.
As we have... I know, you know, it, it is a guarantee. The, 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 the funding has already been approved, and the network design is, as we speak, uh, being performed.
Amazing, thank you.
You're so welcome.
Thank you. Okay, um, I'll call it a go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you, JoJo.
No, you're so welcome. Thank you, everyone.
Yep, we'll be working with you.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm looking very forward. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, you too. Do we have to disconnect her? She's on, okay. Number eleven. Central Nevada Regional Water Authority, for possible action to approve or disapprove a resolution two thousand nineteen dash eleven for Humboldt County to join the Central Nevada Regional Water Authority. I'm not sure why they weren't on, on the beginning one. I know they have attended, um, many of the meetings, and they certainly are qualified with the district that they're in. So I'm really excited that they want to join, and they have to have the approval from all the members.
Yes, that's, that's correct. So Lander County is a, is a voting member, and due to the fact that Humboldt County has come in and requested to be part of, be a voting member, they are currently not a voting member. The, all the current membership counties have to pass a resolution to allow them to be part of, uh, Central Nevada Regional Water Authority.
Why'd they change it hard on Humboldt's part? I mean, they didn't, and now they do want to. Why?
You know, I, I don't know why they want to. I just know they've requested to be part of, of it. I don't, I don't know if you know why they might, Kathy, but...
I do not. I know they've been attending for the last few years, and we're sorry if they weren't.
And there was a, there was a push in Humboldt County for some company in New York City to gobble up a whole bunch of water that they say is there, but it's not there.
Just to have a voice, you know?
They wanted like a million acre feet in reserve around Button Point, and they're saying that there's water there, but there's not.
Every seven years. It's flooded, when it floods or something.
Right, flood.
So like every seven years, they, they, or they want to collect the water.
And they want, some company wants to claim that water.
And that would be going to, uh, the Reno area, I believe.
Okay, um, if we agree, we do need to have the, uh, resolution read into the record.
I'll make a motion. We approve the resolution, um, twenty nineteen dash eleven for Humboldt County to join the Central Nevada Regional Water Authority, which reads, "A resolution recommending that Lander County approve Humboldt County as a member county of the Central Nevada Regional Water Authority effective July first, twenty nineteen. Whereas the members of the Central Nevada Regional Water Authority here, as we refer to as authority, are Churchill County, Elko County, Esmeralda County, Eureka County, Lander County, Nye County, Pershing County, and White Palm County, each of which is a general-purpose unit of local government and subdivision of the state of Nevada. And whereas the authority is a unit of local government created pursuant, pursuant, pursuant to the Nevada Interlocal Cooperation Act, with a goal to collaboratively and proactively address water resource issues common to the Nevada central hydrographic region and, whereas a groundwater basin in Humboldt County is partially located in the Nevada central hydrographic region. And whereas on May sixth, twenty nineteen, the Humboldt County Board of Commissioners voted to join the authority with the understanding that they must pay the requisite assessment. And whereas on May seventeenth, twenty nineteen, the Authority Board of Directors voted unanimously to recommend member county commissions approve Humboldt County as a member county pursuant to Article twelve B of the Cooperative Agreement Creating the Authority. And now therefore be it resolved by the Lander County Board of Commissioners that pursuant to Article six and twelve B of the Cooperative Agreement Creating the Authority, that Humboldt County is accepted as an authority member effective July one, twenty nineteen. And be it further resolved that Humboldt County has all the rights and privileges as conferred in the Cooperative Agreement Creating the Authority. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be maintained in the official files of the authority with the original of the executed Cooperative Agreement establishing the authority, adopted this nineteenth day of September, twenty nineteen. And authorized the chair's room."
One second. Thank you. Brian made the motion, and Kathy seconded that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so that passes unanimously, and Humboldt County is, has our resolution. Number twelve. We are on the health nurse, for possible action to remove the current Lander County Health Board Officer, Abby Burkhart, and approve or disapprove the appointment of the new Lander County Health Board Officer, Brandy Ben Goa.
So last year, uh, when we put the health board, or two years ago, and put the health board together, the, the commission put, um, Abby Burkhart in place there. And as everybody knows, she's no longer with the county. So our current health, we need to make that change to our current health nurse as the, um, health, as a health officer, which is the Lander County Commissioners, the sheriff, and our community health nurse.
And this is for two years?
Until you, is it two years? I thought it was until you deci, I believe it's until you decide.
Yeah, I think it's two years.
Okay.
I think it's two years, too.
It is two years.
It is two years.
Okay, it is two years.
Yes, two-year appointment.
Morning, Brandy.
Good morning, I'm Brandy Ben Goa.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You want this, Brandy?
Yeah.
Just thought I'd ask.
So you're okay to step up and take care of that? Thank you, okay.
I'll make the motion then to approve the appointment of Brandy to, um, the Lander County Health Board Officer, Brandy Ben Goa.
I'll second.
Thank you. Kathy made the motion, and Brian's seconded.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All goes in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Brandy. Okay, we're gonna take another quick five-minute break. And come back for a building official. Did we hang up on Brian?
Yeah.
Sorry.
You're, you're fine.
We're gonna get Austin back, and I'm gonna read in number thirteen. Building official, for possible action to amend the language in the International Residential Code.
Yeah, back to you.
Thank you, Austin. We're reading number thirteen. An international building code, IBC, to allow portable storage units five hundred square feet or less to be exempt from permits. And this is what we asked Anna to look into, and this is what she brought up.
Anna Penola with the Building Department, it's the same language as the C-tenors, it's just, it's gotta be amended out of the code.
Uh, Anna Penola with the Building Department, it's the same language as the C tenors, it's just, it's gotta be amended out of the code.
So basically, and it would, it would be the same, we're just, we're just changing the two hundred to five hundred?
Correct.
At this point in time? Okay.
Correct.
And I'm fine with that for the time being, because I know she kinda undergone on some other stuff, so.
Okay. Do I do a motion then?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that, uh, we amend the language in the International Residential Code IRC and International Building Code, known as IBC, to allow portable storage units five hundred square feet or less to be exempt from permits.
One second.
Thank you, Brian made the motion, Kathy seconded, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that passes. Number fourteen, building official, discussion only, impacts of insurance service, services offices, which is ISO, and their ratings on homeowner insurance rates.
So you guys got your backup, and, so what it is, it's, it's a... Just lost my thought. It's a survey of how well we are equipped with emergency management, fire, uh, our communications for the homeowner. How fast we can get to a fire and put the fire out. So it's based on, um, they look at fire hydrants, location, the closer you are, the better premium you get. For people outside the town limits, where it takes longer for fire to respond, like at Hilltop or Millshoe or out at the new places, the rating is higher. Part of that is being on the, the building codes, we're on two thousand three, and this is Humboldt, Elko, and Lander have been hit hard with this ISO. If we don't cha- if we don't adopt the eighteen codes, we are gonna go to a ten. And everybody's premiums are gonna go through the roof. The code change is to, because it's more, um, stringent than the two thousand three, which makes the liability le- less better for the homeowner, for the building code to be more up to date.
Yeah, I asked Anna, um, one of the reasons it's on there, because I wanted some clarification, because I know like Eureka, they don't have a building department, I guess. So I was curious, what was the insurance rates of those people compared to? I just, I don't like somebody coming in and saying, "You need to adopt this, or we're going to raise your rates." I just, I feel like it's just a bully. So I always kinda fluff up a little bit and say, "Well, I don't like it, and I want some explanation and justification wise that way," and, and, uh, that's why, that's why we're discussing it, so.
So it's not ISO, which is saying it. What, what ISO does is they rate the community, they rate the county as a whole. And like Anna said, it's based on, a lot of it's based on the fire department, their response times, it's, it's rated on, on, uh, the type of equipment that they have, the gallons per minute that the engine can pump, their, their records of maintenance, it's, it's rated on a lot of thing, on several different things. So when ISO says, for instance, we have a, say we have a ten, it's, it's based on one to ten. Ten is the worst, the worst rating that you can get, one is obviously the best. So they come in and say, "Okay, our building co-" and, and they, they base it on our building codes. And I'll get to Eureka in a minute, Commissioner, but, so they say, "Okay, Lander County or Battle Mountain has a, a ten rating" as a, as an example, that's the worst. Now, ISO just gives the rating, then the insurance companies will, will, will come in there, or the, the mortgage companies will come in and say, "Well, you guys have a ten, so, based on that ten, we're gonna give you the, the highest rates possible because you're..." Whatever it may be, our building codes are outdated, our response times are long, our, our equipment, and I'm not saying it is, I just want, I'm using this as an example, the equipment is outdated, or it doesn't meet minimum GPM flow, or gallons per minute flow. So, so that's how, that's how the ISO gives the, the rating, then the mortgage companies are basing it on, on that part of it. That one to ten, ten being the worst. Eureka doesn't have a building department, so they're not rated on a bill, on their building department. So that part of it is, is left out of the, the equation, so to speak.
Yeah, no, I understand, so it's, but see, when we, so we're, we're adopting the IRC and the IBC. Now, these are, I imagine, are pretty thick books.
Yes.
And that's, the problem that I have is, is just, it's lumping this in, I mean, we're Lander, we're Battle Mountain, Nevada, Austin, Nevada. And we're adopting these books that these big cities use, and I just, I think there's some just, that's why, that's the problem I have with it. I just think there's some things in the book that shouldn't apply, and they don't apply to us, but by adopting it, we're accepting-
No, we, like, there's amendments, and I've amended, there's, the amendments have amended a lot of things out, it's not verbatim.
Okay.
And one of it is residential sprinklers.
Yes.
That's amended out.
Okay.
Where are we deficient? What, what specific areas, fire, EMS, the emergency plan?
Building department, building department having the two thousand three IBC IRC code. And that's, that's the, what all three counties are deficient in.
That's, that's, uh, sixteen years ago.
We should, they have new code cycles every three years. We just choose-
Can we drop from a one to a four?
We've never been one.
We're at a ten.
We will be at a ten if we don't get the-
So, so we adopt this, and then we're saying that we abide by it, but then we have the power to amend what we don't like in it?
Absolutely.
Or we just don't have a building department, and then we're not-
Hey, 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 hey!
No, 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 this does not make any sense at all.
Well, that's right.
That we're doing more than another-
No, because you're there.
We're doing more than another county, and we're at a ten? That doesn't make any sense.
We will be at a ten, we're not right now, we're at a four.
Patrick just said we're at a ten.
No, we're at a four right now.
With threat of dropping-
And we're headed to a ten.
Eureka is rated also, just not on the building side, they're re- um, evaluated, in fact, I talked to their Public Works Director, and they dropped because their equipment was old, and they couldn't do the GPMs through their fire truck.
We have the most up-to-date fire equipment, emergency equipment, we buy the best, and we're in trouble?
Let, let me clarify.
Do you have a-
Our fire department, there's not an issue with the fire department, that's just one of the rating systems. And when I spoke of how it's rated, it's, it's rated on that, it's not an issue with our fire department, it's an issue with our building codes because they're so old. That's what's gonna kick us to a ten if we don't, uh-
I thought we were working on that.
Well, we are, we are, we're just giving a background on how, how ISO is, is used. And, and if we don't up, update these building codes to the six, uh, seventeen?
Eighteen.
Eighteens. That, we're gonna get dinged hard on. Our, our response with our, our fire department is fine, equipment's fine, we're not being dinged on that.
Ambulances, all that good.
That's all good.
It's all-
It's all-
Building code.
Yes, because our building codes are so old.
So Anna, so, so we're on two thousand three, and we'd be adopting two thousand eighteen, so we do that, and then we amend changes. It's kinda, it's counterproductive, see, I'm saying, they're, they're wanting us to adopt the new set, but then we have to-
The amendments are the same as we have now.
Right.
Because you opt out, is there, we opt out of the same things that we're opting out of now?
Correct.
Okay, I still need a clarification, because your correspondence in here is a year old, and it says that we're moving you from a four to a ten. And then it says you can do a couple things if you wanna try and preserve it. So since this was a year ago, I, I thought we were at the ten, that's what the correspondence said.
No, I have until Octo- October twenty-seventh to get the codes adopted, or we're gonna go to a ten.
We've been working with, Anna's been working with ISO.
So they gave me an, an extension, a timeframe, to, to adopt the codes to keep our rating.
Okay.
Okay, so what about people that don't, there's just no way that they can follow the code, what do we do with their house?
When they pull a permit, I don't pass the permit, and then the-
No, 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 I'm talking about existing homes, now, there's a house not far from me that part of the house is a camp trailer. It's right up next to the house, people are living in the camp trailer, and what looks to be a square building approximately twenty-four by twenty-four.
This is all new construction, it does not retro or anything else, it's anything, new construction forward. And the mo- and you have to have a mortgage, if you don't have a mortgage, you don't even need flood insurance.
All the new stuff is being done with code, I don't, I'm not worried about the new stuff.
It, it has nothing to do with the old stuff.
The old stuff isn't dragging us down?
No.
No.
It's all the new.
New construction.
Okay.
Thanks, Anna.
So are we on track to be able to get that, and before the expansion is up?
Well, that's why I had the first, the item prior to this, I had to have in, so I can get it, yes, we'll be on track.
So then you'll come back to us on the next, I need to interrupt you, I'm sorry. So you'll come back to us at the next meeting, and we can adopt through?
We'll have to have two public hearings, which is open meeting, and then we get it adopted, get the ordinance done, send it to ISO, and we're good.
And with the same opt-outs as we have now?
Yes.
Okay.
Sadie's here, um, she used to be in insurance for years with Suzie Davis. If you guys have questions that she can answer, feel free, on the insurance side, Tasha's still for the record.
As far as the rates going up, when you're rated at a ten.
So you're gonna run into the problem of, people, say on average, you're paying five, six hundred dollars a year for insurance at a four, you're gonna get tripled, and then you're gonna have companies like a higher, uh, companies like Allstate, those, some of them won't even accept ya. They're gonna dump you, because a lot of them don't want it above a seven or an eight. So it's gonna be a, a storm. If it goes, allows to go to a ten, and then also if it does, and then it's not something you can usually just turn around and fix, they usually have a timeframe.
If we go to a ten, we have to stay at a ten for a year before we can be reevaluated.
Right, which is gonna cause a lot of-
Nightmare for homeowners.
Yeah.
So can't let that happen.
No.
Because the underwriting, like you said, is all considers it, and that's one of the things they consider is the ISO, of course.
Yes, yes.
How you look it up, and it gives you the rating.
Yeah, so then, when somebody was to come in for insurance, we have an agency management system that you put it in, and it pulls up the rating depending on where you're at in the town, how close you are to a fire hydrant, like she said, the response time of the fire department, that kinda things, and that's how it helps you get your base price of what they're going to charge you. And if they will or won't accept you. So that's kinda how it's set up, so some of our out, outskirts are already a little bit higher, so.
So the thing that affects your fire insurance the most is, uh, fire suspec- suppression rating, and that's on response time.
Mm-hmm, a lot of it, yeah, and how close you are to a fire hydrant, yeah. Yeah, that's a huge, huge deal.
So it's the, the fact is that because we didn't change anything since two thousand and three, that's the whole issue.
Yes.
So all we need to do is update it, and we're fine.
Correct.
You need to, you, you, the commission needs to adopt this eighteen ISO, I, uh, IBC code with our-
Amendments.
And it's a two-year cycle or a three-year?
Three-year.
So every three years, you come to the-
Probably, we probably won't do this again for another six years.
Okay, so the first thing that comes back is, is the adoption, and then we have to do the hearings on the ordinance, is that right?
Yes.
In that order?
The hearings, and then the adoption.
The hearing and the adoption.
Well, the adoption would probably be, you, you'd adopt the codes at the same time you, you would have the, uh, original ordinance. And then you would, by adopting it, you'd send the ordinance to the clerk's office, and we'd do the public hearings and stuff.
Okay, so we still have time?
Yes.
Okay, so, Your Honor-
Little, but still.
That's okay, we'll work with you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number fifteen, Public Works. For possible action to award the two thousand nineteen flowing wetlands project to one of the following bidders who have submitted sealed bids. Number one, A, Honeywell Construction Company Incorporated, one million ninety-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars. B, Great Basin Engineering Contractors, one million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-six cents. C, MKD Construction Incorporated, one million, nine hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. D, British Excavating Company Incorporated, one million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars.
For a name, it's for the record, so I would recommend A, Honeywell, um, we do not have, I have the money in the budget. We did not budget this much money for this particular project. So we'll have to do some, some changing in some of our projects, I'll have to get with Cindy on that, um, if we do approve this, but I do believe we need to approve this because to stay in compliance with the state and our, you know, the, um, affluent that we discharge to the river, we're high in nitrates and our TDS, which is total dissolved solids. So if we, if we put all this out into a wetlands, it's, it's not a problem, we're in compliance a hundred percent with the state at that point. And a lot of this is infiltration from groundwater, so when we have high water years like we did the last couple of years, um, some of our pipes and manholes aren't perfectly watertight, so we end up getting a lot of water in. And it doesn't sound like much, but it, it changes the numbers of what we're putting out. For example, some of the roads get a lot of salt on them in the winter, and then you see these great big puddles, and you'll see little bubbles coming up, that's a manhole with the holes in it sucking water in from the street that has a bunch of salt in it, and it really throws our plant into a tailspin. Where if we can just put this out into a wetlands, then we don't have to comply with all that.
And what, what are they gonna do?
So it will, it'll just be a giant wetland, so it, it's gonna be seventy-two acres out there by the sewer plant. So instead of us discharging out into the river, we'll discharge into this wetlands, and then it'll, it'll go through the ground, just similar to a, uh, you know, a septic system going into the-
You're gonna redo the settling ponds out there?
No. It's, it's just a great big wetlands, it's just a place where all the water just flows out there and sits, and, you know, we'll plant little fish that eat mosquitoes and, um, you know, there'll be cattails and stuff that take up your nitrates.
Okay.
And that changes the, the dynamic for the state, we'll keep both permits. Yes, we'll keep both permits, so we will continue to have the permit to discharge to the, to the river, as well as to our wetlands, as kind of a, a backup, half the year we'll try to discharge to the river when our number's really good, and keep our wetlands from getting overly saturated, and then the other half the year, when our number's like in the winter months, when, you know, we're getting a lot of, of rainfall and stuff going into our manholes, or a lot of infiltration, we'll discharge to the wetlands.
Little wet area with toolies around it.
Correct, so this is just a levee, they're gonna build around it to make sure it holds everything.
Okay, now, now-
And, uh, it won't be, it won't be very deep, it's not something that's gonna have, you know, five or ten pound bass in it.
Okay.
So, when-
Disappointing, right?
Yeah, the bits are in, so when, when would they be able to start?
Well, hopefully, as soon as we can get this awarded, they can, they can start, you know, getting material and getting all their equipment and stuff.
And how long will it take?
Six months.
Thank you. Okay, folks, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we award the two thousand nineteen affluent wetlands project to the local bidder, Honeywell Construction Company, in an amount of one million dollars. One million ninety-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars.
Not going to exceed?
Not to exceed one million.
Second.
Ninety-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-six.
Thank you. Brian made the motion, and I seconded that, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The last little comment I'll add to that is, hopefully with the money we saved on putting that wet well in, out here, um, for the project on the, on the Colony Road there going, for our sewer project there, we saved a bunch of money with de-watering. Hopefully that money will cover the difference that we're missing on this, so.
We'll go on the zoom.
Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number seventeen, Austin Airport Advisory Board, for possible action to approve or disapprove NAS Fallon, which is the Naval Air Station, staging several military vehicles at the Austin Airport. And at the last meeting that we had, and as I mentioned, we had, um, the Naval Air Station there to tell us what they needed, and what they wanted, and what their plans were, and the Advisory Board approved that to come in for us to take a look at. And Keith, you were at that meeting, do you wanna give any information on this?
So this will be part of the training exercise that the Naval Air Station Fallon would like to do at the Austin Airport. They wanna stage some vehicles in the area. These vehicles are nothing more than a shell, they are not live, uh, none of the, um, none of the weapons work on it. It's just simply for the training exercise. We've talked with JUB, our airport engineers, because we do have projects coming up next year. They're looking at this as a one-year, or give or take, one-year staging of the vehicles. Um, we've, I, we've talked with JUB several times about this, there are, they're putting it in areas, the rec- the recommended areas that they've put in their, in the book here. And no way it will affect our projects, um, that, that we have upcoming in the next year, so it shouldn't be an issue there. And, and I believe it's gonna be good for the county to, to, uh, put this out there for the Navy, Navy to use. They'll be buying fuel, they'll be using our facility, uh, for their, like I say, their training.
For some of the exercises, yes, in fact, they've already been doing exercises with helicopter, or they'll- over the this month, um, but one of the neat things, I think, is to think that, um, our our little county here, and of course, the south end, with our small little community of Austin, and here we are going, there's nowhere else in the world that they would be able to stage something like that, and have them do their their practices to to identify these, in fact, the pictures are in here of what they'll be using to identify these type of, um, uh, vehicles that would be sitting there, so they were real excited about it, and we were too, I mean, talk about patriotism to think, wow, nowhere in the world on any range is anything ever like this, but we have the availability and the the rangeland and sparseness enough for them to do it, so it's before you to see what you would like to do.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve NAS Fallon staging, um, their vehicles at the Austin Airport.
I'll second.
Thank you, it's been moved by Kathy and seconded by Brian, that we do that, um, and it could be as long as a couple of years, actually, um, that's the whole point, they got, once they move them in, they don't have to move them back out, Ray, did you have any comments?
Ray's not here.
Okay, then I guess he doesn't, thank you, all right, no other discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and now passes.
Can we revisit item number one?
Uh, excuse me?
Can we revisit item number one?
Can we redo it?
Revisit it, revisit, reopen it, go back, cause I didn't hear public comment on that, and I, that's why I was here, so I stayed till I ended the meeting.
Okay, we don't, we don't call for public comment after every item, we, you're entitled to give it, but we don't stop and call for it, if you missed it.
I I'm sorry, I don't know how this all works, but.
No, that's okay, that's that, that's what we do, and that's the explanation at the beginning, um, I don't know, can we go ahead and?
You.
It moved on pretty quickly.
You took no action on it, so you really can't reopen it, but but since you confined, uh, the commission's comments to a a certain area, I believe that, uh, in talking to Brian, uh, I believe that, uh, you add public comment at the end, they can make public comment about those, anything.
Even though it was agendized, she can make public comment for that item at the end.
On things outside of the confines that you that you yourself set, which is.
Did she follow that?
Um, no, not really, I'm sorry.
Jen, at at the very end, we have a segment for public comment.
Okay, I just didn't want to move on as quickly as it got over with, or else I.
But we can't reopen it because no action was taken.
Then I would like to have a public comment.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We are at number eighteen, Correspondents, Correspondents report potential upcoming agenda items.
Are we gonna be looking at any of the new, like, RS two four seven seven road stuff, particularly the North Fork Road closure that we have up here?
I'm, we're just waiting to get another person on pool lock.
Okay.
To get an opinion, go through pool lock, and then.
Cause is, after that new law, is that still locked up there?
I know.
It's still locked.
And it's on, it's on B L N property, according to the B L N map.
Right, right.
That's why, that's the only reason it's not come forward.
And and at some point in time, you you could, you could ask me to send them a letter, uh, if if after what Art's saying happens, you could, the the remedy would be first to send them a letter, uh, outlining what the current law is.
Current law, right.
And ask them to unlock the the gate.
Have we had any responses on the pool lock advertisement for a member?
Nothing.
No, we need one more person for, got Dan and Louis Lanny, I think, are on there, we need one more for a corner. But if it does, if we don't get anybody in a reasonable amount of time, we're just bringing forward.
Actually, at the NACO conference, there there is a whole workshop on two oh, two four seven seven roads, too, so hopefully we'll be able to sit in on that.
Mr. Clark?
Okay, any agenda items?
Is the doctor ready to discuss?
I can't hear you.
Is the doctor ready to talk about the transportation stuff that he wanted to talk about?
Yeah, yeah, next meeting, yeah. Just to have that on the record more likely.
And then also, we we had discussed the Civic Center, and we were going to try to get some of the archive data to present, to where we have some real clear, um, instruction on how it should be used and whatnot, I think we kinda left it kinda unclear, is that something that we could?
All the stuff that I have found, um, for that is all civic, cause it started with the library, when they began the library, so it, everything that has to do with, um, that grant, he is all civic stuff, I mean, I can bring him forward.
Yeah, maybe with all the backup documentation.
Um, everything that they've done, cause he donated multi-millions of dollars towards all of these types of projects, and so that's what they were all, museums and libraries and those kind of, um, things, so.
And and I'd like to make a statement on, it was brought to my attention by by Keith and Sean on behalf of the, uh, Rex Center, they they ordered some tarps, was it tarps, uh, for about five thousand dollars, and that, and we weren't sent, I mean, it looked like it was fictitious business and everything, we found out yesterday that the guy who owns the business, it's not fictitious, it's a real business, he had a heart attack and he was out, and apparently his employee took our money, and used, uh, embezzled it from him, basically, and he's making good on it, and he's gonna be sending my office the money back, and I'll turn that over to Keith's office as soon as we get it, I just wanted to.
Any other agenda items? Okay, move into public comment. This is for non-agendized items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or can make comments on any non-agenda item, and the board may, if any, in discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board, all public comment may be limited to three minutes per person, again at the discretion of the board, reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted, so, um, because we've had the request, we're making an exception on an agenda item, if you'd like to come forward and make your public comment.
Oh, wait a second, Ted, are we making an exception, or she's just speaking in her public comment?
She's speaking in the public comment.
But public comment is for non-agendized only, and so we're making an exception.
You well, the except, it's kind of an exception, but not really, because you you can find, number one, to a very limited section, so if they wanna make a co- public comment on anything outside that.
We can't.
They're entitled to.
Okay.
Is anyone come forward?
Yes, please.
Jenny, a cheerleader, for the record. So, in Judy's defense right now, she probably was very well aware that this was on the agenda, correct?
Yes.
Yes, so I wanna know if she's not here because she was asked not to be here, or if she's a coward, because if it was maybe you guys' brother, maybe you would take this a little bit more serious, there has been some very unprofessional things that she has done, and it's been very kept, it's been kept very quiet, I don't know why nobody wants to step forward and call bullshit on it, but it's wrong what she's done. And everybody likes to sit back and not say very much, and then you wanna close it up, and I I I wanna know why.
Well, I recused myself, so I can't discuss it.
Yes, thank you.
There, well, I can even, because I think there's limited things that you're, we're allowed to say without breaking ethics, I think that's.
For sure.
You know, that's where I think the the limit comes into.
And that's fine, but this is the position she has chose as a public official, like, what her position is, is to be out here in the public.
But she still has, she's, there's still.
Right, so so when she goes, screech in front of my brother, out in the, in front of nobody, and so that nobody gets to see, and she acts, uh, very unprofessional, and she's been chosen for this position, that is nonsense, and then it gets quieted down, and Bert has shown nothing but professionalism in everything he does, correct me if I'm wrong, and then she gets called on something and gets put on the agenda, and then doesn't show up, that is coward, and that is bullshit, and nobody, everybody wants to sit back, I don't understand it.
Once again, it's not that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It was on the agenda.
And she didn't show.
And, but we still discussed it.
Briefly, and and how did you discuss it, did anything get done, it got shoved under the carpet?
No, no, we couldn't make a motion, because Brian recused himself, and so did Art.
I had to.
So, there was only two of us, so so no action was taken, but.
So that's what, in order to do that, that's how it gets swept under the carpet, is that one, one's already said something about her, and one decides not to back up a commissioner who's been nothing but professional, and then, and so therefore it gets swept under the carpet.
I wouldn't say it was swept under the carpet, it it was officially put on the agenda, and we did discuss it, and our our remarks of how we felt, meaning, um, needing more civility, more respect, more professionalism, and we hope all of us will do that, and that went on the record.
So she can read it, and then, and then maybe she'll just step up to the.
Do you know, I I'll just have to say, um, I don't know what Judy will do, uh, but, um, we will try and maintain that decorum.
I really hope so, because I don't know what else is gonna happen if she's.
And and we will try.
Thank you, thank you, because if, I mean, something needs to happen, cause if something happens to my brother, and this has been brought up and brought up, and if something happens to my brother because of her crazy ways, it's not gonna be good, because this has been brought to everybody's attention.
But there's guy, there's guidelines that we have to be with, stay within, too.
Her too.
I am, no, and I'm not, I'm not saying, I am not saying that that she does not, but we have to also, and, um.
Yes.
We do, or we we have to stay within guidelines of what we can say and what we can do.
So should we readdress this when she shows up?
I think some of your concerns are, um, what she does outside of the commission meetings, and we can't really comment on that, but we can certainly try and keep, as I said, the decorum, the professionalism, and the respect back in this.
Cause this has been an obvious problem for quite some time.
Yes.
To some people, it's been obvious, it's been obvious to me from the beginning.
Right, if you have eyes this, it's very obvious, and ears this.
Something should have been done in the meeting.
Absolutely.
To to stop it, because it only escalated.
Yes, it has escalated, for sure, so I want something to be done about it besides it just like, oh, okay, yep, that's it, nope, she was coward, and now we're done.
All of this, all of this is on the record at a minimum.
Good.
So.
Thank you.
It's there.
All right, that's all I have to say, anything you need to say to me, cause I did show up, I'm like Judy, huh, thank you.
Any other public comment? Hearing none.
Make a motion to.
Second.
I'll second.
Move to second and and third in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, thank you.